Okay, at seven o'clock, I'd like to call the meeting in order. Please rise for the pledge.
Let's lead this to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Make a note, everybody's present? As of now. Approval minutes, the regular meeting minutes of one May 2025 were provided for review. Staff recommends a motion to approve with corrections. The one correction is Mr. Cromer was listed twice as a speaker, but only spoke once. So that should be the only correction to it. But so recommend a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes as amended.
We'll move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Call the roll.
Mr. Stenicka?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Gerby?
Yes.
Mr. Kowalski?
Yes.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Clemmons?
Yes.
Mr. Brungardt?
Yes.
Motion passed. Audience participation, is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the council on an item that is not on the agenda tonight?
Good evening, gentlemen. Paul Cromer, live on 131st Street in the county. Some of you appreciate the correction on the meeting minutes. Some of you may think you don't like me. Some of you may think I'm a jerk, but we don't really even know each other. But even though I live in the county, I look at you as my neighbor, and therefore I love you. I may speak boldly about what I am passionate about. We may not agree on everything, but can we find some common ground? There are only a handful of things that I won't budge on. Won't you be my neighbor? Over the last three and a half months, I have heard in the councilman comments and in the comments from the city administration that we want to get the correct information out to the people. We want to avoid any confusion on these projects. I would like to make a formal request that the planning and zoning meetings be posted to the city's YouTube page. I believe this would be a great step in getting all the facts out to the people who cannot physically attend these meetings due to whatever circumstances that may be. Mayor McNeil, will you publicly commit tonight that you will make these meetings available for the citizens of Lansing?
I will publicly commit to looking into it.
Thank you, sir. I'll move ahead. According to the experts in this field, the Lansing tax burden is due in part to not having commercial and industrial to hold the brunt of the property tax burden. So if we are in this position because housing is not, housing is doing the majority of the heavy lifting on taxes, then how is a denser housing market going to get us out of this? We need commercial and industrial first, or we will just keep digging the hole deeper, and this bedroom community will just keep getting larger. What are you guys' corrective actions on contacting contiguous property owners so that the non-notification that happened with Chuck Ebert in the Epic Estates project never happens again? I understand that some of you didn't realize that the notifications had to be made if it was outside the city limits, but they do. I hope all of you would agree that in the future, all landowners must be notified as according to state statute at their physical address if they do not reside at that contiguous property address. Sending a notification letter to a vacant lot does not fulfill a proper notification. Maybe ensure some due diligence from the staff and send the notification to where the tax bills are sent. I appreciate you guys. Have a good night.
All right, thank you, Ms. Cromer. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Okay. Item number two is the Historical Society Discussion. Mr. Tom Young with the Lansing Historical Society will come up and address the council, give us a brief on the prison tours.
Well, I would say the prison has really taken off. It's doing great. Up to right now, we started March 1st on our tours this year. And as of right now, from March 1st to right now, we've had over 1,200 visitors. And not just from Lansing. I mean, we get people from Texas and Florida and all over the place. So it's really gaining popularity. And this year, we are actually paying our tour guides. And we have, in the past, we had mainly people that worked at the prison conducting the tours. And Teresa and I actually are tour guides. We're official tour guides. We got a hat and everything, you know, so. And it's a paid position now, so. We're always looking for people that are interested in Lansing's history because a lot of people could really do a great job. And so, like I say, I think it's off to a great start. The, another thing that we added was paranormal tours, which the Ghost Hunters, that's been pretty wild. We've actually filled those up. Those take place, the regular tours are like Friday, Saturday, Sunday. And the ghost tours typically are like a Saturday night from eight o'clock to one o'clock in the morning. So when you're walking around the prison with all the lights out and these guys are setting up all their equipment and talking to the spirit world and stuff, I mean, whether you believe in that stuff or not, it makes you wonder. I've had the hairs on the back of my neck since then.
Any activity?
Anyhow, it's an experience if that's anything you're interested in.
Tom, has there been any activity?
Teresa's actually got touched one time. It's pretty weird that she was sitting there, we were supervising the Apex team, they were doing some videos and stuff. And she was sitting there minding her own business, and all of a sudden something came across her neck, and she's like, what the heck? And then they've got these little machines that actually can transmit whatever they hear. And it said, "I touched her" right after that. And anyhow, she was just kind of freaking out about that.
Sign me up.
Next thing out of that box that said cross. And then on the way out, she was telling the people from Apex what happened. And they looked at it and said, "Are you wearing a cross necklace?" She said, "Yeah." She said, "You've been touched." So anyhow, that's kind of weird.
Every time I get back into that same cellhouse, the lights will go. We have these different gadgets for motion and different types of movement stuff. And they've gone on, and somebody has said my name every time. So it's kind of pity.
They know you.
I'm not sure if I believe it or not, but it's hard to, you know, say it now.
It's pretty wild. Anyhow, in August, the Kansas City Paranormal Group is hosting what they call Paracon KC. And they're actually going to have the Masonic Lodge in Leavenworth as their central headquarters. But they're also going to have another special tour that they're bringing VIPs out to the state prison. And people from Ghost Hunters or from the TV show are actually going to be there. So anyhow, it's gaining a lot of popularity. And I wanted to tell you that the $25,000 that you gave us last year, we spent with Lamar Outdoor Advertising. And we got four months of, I don't know if any of you have seen the billboards as you drive around Kansas City, but they're in pretty prominent spots, like around 435 and I-70. And we got a great response from all of those.
They're digital, too.
Yeah. So, and they're actually, we had to sign up for four months, and that was for the $25,000. And they said that Lamar is actually running a special where you can only have to sign up for two months for like $12,000. If that's anything you guys are thinking about budgeting for this year that would be beneficial, you know, not only to the Historical Society, but for the city as well, because, you know, people are talking about Lansing now. And we're also in the process of the prison sign manufacturing plant is actually producing some signs, some directional signs that have the brown reflective, you know, for the historical type signs when you're driving through a city. You look for those brown signs, well, it's gonna say prison tours are this way. I don't know if I have to get a sign permit to put those up. So whoever I need to talk to about getting a sign permit, I'd like to put a couple out there by the main sign in front of the prison and then a couple on Kansas Avenue, because a lot of times people turn up Kansas, they don't know where to go. So we need to direct them to the depot. That's where we start the tours. So we need to see, figure out what we need to do there. And also, I would like to put one on the "Welcome to Lansing" sign. I know the guy that built that, so I think we can probably figure out a place that we can put something up there like a little starburst or something that says, you know, "Historic Prison Tours," just to let people know. And another thing, you probably saw in the paper last week, we reconstructed a replica of the gallows. We've been trying for like 30 years to get the original gallows back. If you're not familiar with gallows are, that's where they used to hang people in prison. And if you grew up in Lansing in the 1960s, that was a pretty big part of our history. And it's the only prison in the state that does that. So anyhow, we actually went and visited the museum in Topeka where the original ones are, and they're not going to get rid of them. So anyhow, we got blueprints of the actual size, and we created a replica that's nearly spot on. I mean, there's a couple little differences. It doesn't have an operating trap door, because I just put a little dummy door there because I didn't want to get a phone call at three in the morning and say, "Hey, somebody's hanging from your gallows." Wouldn't be good advertising. So anyhow, I've got the noose and stuff, and I had to Google how to make nooses. So hopefully the FBI is not going to be calling me. "Hey, what are you doing making nooses and stuff?" I've got it screwed to the main hanging beam up there, so it's not functional either. And at 10 o'clock tomorrow morning, and they're having a media day, and they're actually going to do an unveiling, so like the Kansas City Star, they called me yesterday, so I did an interview with them. People from radio stations and stuff are going to show up. And you guys are invited, and it's free of charge for city council and if you're with radio and TV and that kind of stuff. So, any questions?
Tom, we do a lot of field trips with kids. Is there a certain age group that might benefit from?
We actually did one last week with Piper Middle School kids. We did Atchison High School, Labette County, you know, Junior College, that kind of stuff. So from middle school on up, I think they, it's an eye-opening experience, you know? When you, you know, show these kids what these slam doors are, you know, when these guys are in a cell for 23 out of 24 hours a day, you say, "You do one bad thing, you could end up here," you know, so it's an eye-opener.
Okay, so you already had tours with middle school on up?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Seventh grade especially, it would be appropriate because of, that's when Kansas history is taught. So that would tie in unbelievably well.
Yes, I mean, we're open for, you know, school kids from all over the state or other states as far as that goes.
We've had buses come in with 50 kids on it, and we got two or three guys. Anyway, our basic rules say 12 and up, not that we could make an exception to teachers, but that's just hanging up.
That's pretty much it right now, so.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, Tom. Thanks, Tom. Thanks, Teresa. All right, item number three, firefighter pinning. The city is proud to promote Jim McGee to captain, who will be pinned tonight. Firefighters Chris Concanon will receive his senior firefighter badge. Firefighters Jordan DeRousse, Travis Nurk, and Brock Pierce have now completed their one-year probation, are receiving their firefighter EMT badge. And the city is also presenting our volunteer Jim Dyson with their firefighter badge. He's got a lot of badges going. It's good news.
That's awesome.
They will remember that for years.
That's Joe.
Next up is Travis Nurk.
Nobody's excited.
Our last one for tonight is our volunteer Jim Dyson. We also had two other volunteers that were unable to make it tonight. It's a dead bat crap.
God, Jim.
Push your chance.
Blood makes it goes on better.
This girl's with the school, Josh. He used to soak the rap basketball in. I thought he was a fireman. I didn't know he was a volunteer fireman.
Maybe we can get them all up together.
Congratulations, all firefighters. That was awesome. Item number four is National Public Works Week proclamation. And Mr. Mike Spicklemeyer will be awarding that, right?
I'm just, you're reading it.
I'm just reading.
Who am I awarding it to? Come on up, Kenny. Proclamation is as follows. Public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to the sustainable and resilient communities and to the public health, quality of life, and well-being of the people of Kansas. These services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of the public works professionals, engineers, managers, employees at all levels of government, private sector, and those who are responsible for building, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, solid waste, public buildings, and other essential facilities for our citizens. The year 2025 marks the 65th Annual National Public Works Week sponsored by the American Public Works Association. Vietnam proclaimed that the mayor, Tony McNeil, of the city of Lansing, Kansas, does hereby proclaim Lansing's full support and designating May 18th to 24th, 2025, as National Public Works Week. He urges all Lansing citizens to join with the APWA and pay tribute to the professionals and recognize the substantial contributions they make to protecting our national health, safety, and quality of life.
Okay, new business. Item number five is approval of the 2024 audit. Staff from the firm Adams Brown LLC performed the audit of the financial statements for the city of Lansing for the year ending December 31st, 2024. Alexis Crispin is a member of the firm, will be present to brief, give us a brief overview of the audit and answer any questions. Staff recommends a motion to approve the final audit for the city of Lansing for the year ending December 31st, 2024. So.
Don't move.
Second.
Do we want to hear from the, do we want to hear the presentation first before we call the roll?
Yeah. So Alexis, I'll hand it off to you. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. I felt like it was on a, was it T-Mobile commercial there for a second? Okay, my name is Alexis Crispin. I am a senior audit staff with Adams Brown, and I'm going to go ahead and present the audit for you. Can you enable the screen sharing function unless you guys all have a copy in front of you? If you all have a copy, I can just read off and tell you the page numbers to flip to. Oh, there we go. Okay, can you see my screen?
Yep. Yep, yes.
Okay, perfect. All right, well, I am going to start with page one. This is the Independent Auditor's Report, and you will note that there are two opinions here. The first is an adverse opinion on U.S. generally accepted accounting principles. That essentially is just saying that you guys do not perform your audit on GAAP basis. You do a regulatory basis audit. You waive that GAAP requirement annually. And so for that regulatory basis, the K-MAG basis, which is what fits nicely with how your budget's prepared, you guys have an unmodified opinion, and that is a clean opinion, and it essentially means that your financial statements were materially correct. That is what you want to see. So, moving forward, you can read the rest of that letter. It might put you to sleep, but you are certainly free to and reach out if you have any questions. But after that, I am going to flip back to page five. So this is your summary statement of receipts, expenditures, and unencumbered cash. And from the beginning of the year, your unencumbered cash balance was a little over $7 million. And then at the end, that balance had increased to about $11 million. A couple funds where some of that change was coming from. So first off, the general fund had a little bit of a decrease, about $588,000. A good chunk of that was the Spartan Pumper Trunk that was approved last year. And then moving on down, capital improvements, there was just less activity in that fund this year. There was fewer expenditures. So that saw an increase of about $714,000. And then ARPA Fund had to spend it down. It's a grant that had a period of performance that was coming up on the end. So it's a good thing we're seeing a zero there. And then the FIRE Fund is new in 2024. And the Town Center Fund also spending down, getting that project wrapped up. Had some proceeds from the sale of land, and we also paid off the temp note principal. And then CIP Parks, we had a negative balance in the prior year. That was okay. We were waiting on some bond proceeds that were going to come in in 2024. So that's why that cash balance jumped quite a bit. And then same thing with the McIntyre Sanitary Sewer. We had a negative balance in the prior year. We were waiting on bond proceeds, and then those came in in 2024. Any questions on this one? Okay. The next page, page six, is what starts our notes to the financial statement. So these are just required to kind of supplement the numbers that we just gave you. There's nothing that's really unusual in this section that I would bring to your attention. If you did have a statute or budget violation, this is where we would note it. But since there was nothing like that this year, again, great reading material. If you're trying to fall asleep, we always make that joke. So if you are reading through it and find something that you're not sure about, Beth has my information. Feel free to reach out. But otherwise, I am going to skip back to the debt schedule. So total principal that was outstanding as of the end of 2024 was $29,535,000. And the last of that will be paid off in 2043. After that, we have the summary of expenditures, actual and budget. And again, you don't have any budget violations, but if you did, this is where we would note it. So after that, I do not go through any of these funds in particular unless anybody has any specific questions about them. Instead, I would jump back to the single audit section. So this year, because you spent over $750,000 in federal dollars, you had to have something called a single audit. And so we have a couple of additional reports and footnotes and schedules in the back of the audit report here. And this first one on page 41 is the report on internal control over financial reporting. And so this is where we would note any deficiencies if we had found them during the audit of the financial statements. We didn't have any to note, so I'm going to skip back two pages. For page 43 is the report on compliance for each major program. So this is specific to the major program that we tested for the single audit. And again, no deficiencies to note here, so we can keep moving along. Page 46, we have the schedule of expenditures of federal awards. And you had spent about $1.8 million in the year, and this is the breakdown of those programs. Page 47, just required footnotes to go along with that, CIFA. Nothing unusual to note here. And then page 48 is a summary of both sections. So under that financial statement header, you'll see that unmodified opinion over the regulatory basis of accounting that I had mentioned earlier. Again, no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies. And then on down in the federal awards section, no deficiencies or material weaknesses, and both have an unmodified opinion. The only other thing that you might question on this page, well, first, you can also see what program we tested, and that was the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds. But if you were wondering why you guys do not qualify as a low-risk oddity, there's a series of questions that we have to ask in order to get a yes answer. We have to have 100% of them answered yes. So because you guys do not do your audit on GAAP basis, and then also because you haven't had a single audit in both of the prior periods, you are not a low-risk oddity. That just means that we have to test at least 40% of your federal expenditures for the year in terms of which program we pick. And because that coronavirus program was over 40% of your federal expenditures for the year, it really didn't impact you either way. the year, it really didn't impact you either way. So after that, there's no findings to note back here. Does anybody have any questions over the audit report before I jump into the governance Hearing none, I will flip over. So this is the governance letter. First things to note on here, we did not have any difficulties encountered during the audit, no disagreements with management. I want to thank your guys' staff, they work really hard on this audit, and we really appreciate the work that they put into it to make sure that we can get it done quickly, get in and out of their hair as fast as we can, and make it as painless a process as possible. The only other thing that I would point out on this, we didn't have one audit recommendation, so this is not something that rises to the level of a significant deficiency or material weakness, it's just something that we saw that we think could be improved upon. And that is that we recommend that the city's policies be updated to more clearly reflect information required by federal statute for procurements, grant management, and conflict of interest. It does touch, your policies do touch on these things, but I do think they could be maybe a little bit more clear in reference to the federal requirements when you're working with that federal aid. So when you have federal dollars coming in for grants and things like that, there's certain written policies that have to be in place, and I think we could maybe just work a little bit on updating that language. But other than that, we want to thank you guys for the opportunity to continue working with you, and if you have any questions, I am happy to take them at this time.
Anybody have any questions?
I don't have.
Relax.
No.
We do not, Alexis. Thank you for the brief, though.
Well, I sent a management representation letter to Beth that just needs to be signed, and then we will get the audit submitted to the state as well as to the federal audit clearinghouse and get everything wrapped up for the year.
Okay, really appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, have a good night.
You too. Beth, did you have anything additional or... Okay, so we do have a motion and a second to approve the final audit for the City of Lansing for the year ending December 31st, 2024. So call the roll.
Mr. Sednikah?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Kowalski?
Yes.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Clemmons?
Yes.
Mr. Brungardt?
Yes.
Motion passed. Thank you, Beth. Appreciate your work on the audit, too. Item number six is Lansing Library Board Appointment. Marsha Jaskiewicz and Wendy Vodrick have applied for reappointment to the Lansing Community Library Board to serve another four-year term ending 30 April, 2029. Staff and Library Advisory Board recommends a motion to approve the Lansing Community Library Advisory Board reappointments for Marsha Jaskiewicz and Wendy Vodrick.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? Call the roll.
Mr. Sednikah?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Kowalski?
Yes.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Clemmons?
Yes.
Mr. Brungardt?
Yes.
Motion passed. Item number seven is Ordinance Number 1131 Unified Development Ordinance Amendment, Article 4 Zoning District and Use Standards. Proposed text amendment introduces new uses to Article 4.03 permitted uses, amends Article 4.05 specific use standards to support the new uses, and clarifies accessory building regulations. The Planning Commission and staff recommend a motion to adopt the Ordinance Number 1131. So I need a motion to approve the adoption of Ordinance 1131 to amend the City of Lansing's Unified Development Ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? Josh is here to answer any questions.
We decided this is just for like pump station, booster station, or something if they wanted to build like AT&amp;T or Clearwave.
Correct. Yeah, so right now, we had no, the way the use table is structured, we had no recourse for any sort of utilities, substations. This provides an avenue forward with conditionally used permits attached in some areas and some other areas, it'd be permitted depending on the size and scale.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Call the roll.
Mr. Sednikah?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Kowalski?
Yes.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Clemmons?
Yes.
Mr. Brungardt?
Yes.
Motion passed. Item number eight is Lansing Town Center North Final Plat. The applicant is requesting the approval of the final plat for Lansing Town Center's second replat subdivision, which will replat Lot 2 of Lansing Town Center, replat, and Lot 6 of Lansing Town Center. On April 23rd, 2025, the Planning Commission approved the final plat by a vote of 4-0 to recommend approval of the dedication of the land as described by the final plat. So I need a motion to approve the dedication of the land as described by the Lansing Town Center's second replat. And this is KC, I'm sorry, this is KC, KCC additional land that they bought. I have a motion and a second, any discussion? Call the roll.
Mr. Sednikah?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Kowalski?
Yes.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Clemmons?
Yes.
Mr. Brungardt?
Yes.
Motion passed. Ordinance Number 1132 Schedule of Fees Update. Ordinance Number 1132 adopts the updated fee schedule. The changes are in the residential refuse collection and suggested senior rate for the Aquatic Center. So staff recommends a motion to adopt Ordinance 1132 Approval of Fees Schedule.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion on this one? Call the roll.
Mr. Sednikah?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Kowalski?
Yes.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Clemmons?
Yes.
Mr. Brungardt?
Yes.
Motion passed. Item number 10 is Planning Commission Appointment. Brian Payne. Brian Payne applied for reappointment to the Planning Commission to serve another three-year term ending 30 April, 2028. Recommended action is a motion to approve the reappointment of Brian Payne to a three-year term on the Planning Commission.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion on this one? Call the roll.
Mr. Sednikah?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Kowalski?
Yes.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Clemmons?
Yes.
Mr. Brungardt?
Yes.
Motion passed. Item number 11 is Change Order 1 Town Center Sewer Project, City Project 2021-03. During the construction of the project, the existing sewer main was excavated in preparation for connection to the new improvements, and it was determined to be unsuitable for future use. After consultation with the General Contractor GBA, the city engineer staff field, it is appropriate to replace the ductile iron and clay pipe with new PVC pipe. Proposed center consideration is to replace the additional 72 feet of 8-inch pipe at a cost of $36,135. So I need a motion to approve Change Order 1 for the Town Center Sewer Project in the amount of $36,135 and raise the allowable contractual amount to $1,118,019.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? Tony's here to answer any questions.
This is just a change order because of the condition of the pipe.
Correct. Excuse me, in the exhibit that was included, you saw the ductile iron and saw how it rooted it was.
Any other discussion? Okay, we have a motion and a second, call the roll.
Mr. Sednikah?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Kowalski?
Yes.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Clemmons?
Yes.
Mr. Brungardt?
Yes.
Motion passed. Reports, any department heads? Tony?
I just mentioned while I'm sitting here, next Tuesday, we have the preconstruction conference for the Ida Gamble Street Sewer Project. That will begin first week of June and will necessitate closure of Ida Street for a period of time while they make those improvements. So, more with RPIO to make sure everybody gets the word out and they're fully aware of it. Detours will be posted, which should be, with school being out, it should be minimal impact to the local area.
So you're closing Ida, then?
We'll close Ida because that entire intersection's got to get rebuilt.
How long?
That's up to the contractor to decide. We'll know more after Tuesday's pre-con.
How much of Ida?
It will just be right there at that intersection, so everyone will still have access from the north, south, and the east. They just won't be able to go through, but detours will be posted.
Okay, nice to know I can get to my driveway, thank you.
We can make a rate.
Tony, I do have one question.
Sir?
Did you get the fiber that went through the manholes fixed? Has all that been moved out of the...
Can you repeat that, please?
The fiber, when they laid the fiber and they drove through the intersects with the manholes?
We're actually still working on that with council, so it's in the works.
All right, thank you.
Any other department heads? Josh?
One quick thing, Independence Day will be June 28th this year at the high school, Lansing High School, again, so.
Our celebration of Independence Day, yes.
Yes.
Yeah. I mean, Independence Day is still Independence Day, I'm just...
I stand corrected.
I give you guff. All right, now I know no other department head's going to want to talk after that, right? Yeah. City Attorney?
Assistant Commissioner.
Okay. City Administrator, Tim?
So I know the big news has been the two-and-a-half-week delay on the pool. You know, obviously, that was disappointing, but we feel good about the contractor getting it done that second week of June. We just, we want the product to be done correctly, we want everyone to be safe, so we're looking at that second, late in the second week of June. We'll refine those dates and keep you all posted, so we're looking at doing ribbon cutting and open house, and then later that week, open to the public, so that is exciting. Along those lines, though, since there would be a little bit less swim time for people, we're looking at just charging people 80% of what the season pass would be that's in the, in the fee schedule. So I think it was page 111 of the agenda packet, so we would be charging people for season passes 80%, so there would be a little bit of a discount there. Any questions on anything pool-related or...
Where are we going to be able to go to get the season pass?
I believe that would be at the Parks and Rec office.
Was it where were you?
Yeah. Are they for sale?
Yeah. Initially, we'll have for sale at the Parks and Rec office, and then once we open, you'll be able to buy them there at the facility as well, like the passes and things like that.
Cool. You're going to require ID?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, to prove a residency.
Right. Just so somebody can say I didn't know I had...
Jason, are they for sale right now? Are they ready?
They are not for sale.
Okay. Is there a date that we're going to...
We're working on it.
I'm killing the department heads today, sorry.
Obviously, we're going to want to be doing it at least a couple of weeks, you know, before, prior to opening.
Yeah. Okay.
Jason, what's your blood pressure right now?
Not good.
Okay.
Can you see it?
The fence looks really good.
I see the vein inside your head.
Oh, thank you.
Jason, you've been doing a good job to roll this, you and your staff. This is something we've never done before, and been delays that were nobody's fault, and we just got to roll with the punches and look forward to when it opens up.
I appreciate that, and I would be remiss not to thank Tish, and Leslie, and Tim, and Joe, our pool managers, doing a ton of stuff, and now his assistant managers are helping, and we would be lost without him, honestly, so I really thank you guys all for everything you've done.
Teamwork. It was a pretty bad winter. You know, we had a lot of school closings and a lot of snow, a lot of sub-zero temperatures, yeah. I mean, it is what it is. We've been waiting for 25 years for this pool, another two weeks ain't going to hurt anybody.
I was asked if anybody can reserve the pool for a pool party.
We're not planning on doing private parties this year just because we acquire so many guards and the cost, the cost related with that, so we're going to focus on our, focus on the open pool time to the public, or obviously, if somebody wanted to, you know, have a birthday party there or something like that, they could come do that during open hours. We're just going to have to see how things, we've got a lot to learn.
Sure do.
And the other thing that I was asked, are you going to allow groups to sell food outside there, or is that strictly our vendors?
We have a contract for vending machines currently.
That's what I thought.
That's what we're going to do, so. Probably, actually, if we get a percentage of those vendings out, it would actually probably be detrimental to us for other vendors to sell there, but I don't know, I really don't know the, I'd have to speak with Josh a little bit maybe about the rules of that, to be honest with you.
Thank you.
All right, Tim, you have anything else?
Just, just really quick, Mr. Cromer brought up a couple of really good points. We did record a couple of Planning Commission meetings on YouTube, I'll double-check to see if, you know, that'll be a more regular occurrence and how that'll work. The thing that is challenging, and you guys saw that right before the audit started, I mean, that's not a simple system to work. So there's only a couple of people who know how to run it, we would have to train people, we'd have to ask someone to give up one item a month, so not undoable, that's certainly something we can strive for, but it's, it's a little bit more difficult than people realize. And then I guess the second thing that I would just say, and we did send out letters to every property owner on all of those rezones, I don't know if the one letter got lost in the mail or what the deal was, that does happen, there's times when we will send Christmas cards and they will get sent back to us or whatever, so not sure what happened with that, but we did send letters to everybody within the radius area, so. But again, I think everyone's on the same page that, you know, we definitely want information out to residents, and we want to continue to strive to get information out to residents, so those are...
And the guy did show up, so the one that's, the address he did show up.
Yes, yep, 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 so. But that's, that's the big thing I had, so.
How many letters do we send out for that, just to ballpark, you know?
20.
How many?
20.
Each time, you think? 20 each time, so.
Let's call, let's see if we can call it 20.
But if we sent them a certified mail to make sure that they got in the hands of the people they were supposed to get in the hands of, that would be taxpayer dollars being used to make sure that process is handled.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's something we could look into, start doing it certified or something like that. I'm trying to, is it $4 or $7 or something like that, but to that point, I mean, if that checks something off...
Almost be worth the money to make sure that the letter's got to the people they're supposed to get to.
Yeah, that's, that's something we could look into for sure, so, yep, that's all I've got.
All right, thanks, Tim. We will go around the horn, starting with Don.
I don't have much this evening, just want to say a shout-out to Beth Sanford and her staff on the audit, as always, and keeping our finances straight, and congratulations to all our firefighters, our captain promotion there, and then all our EMT firefighters, et cetera. That's been a long time coming. This council has worked on trying to get our own fire department for many, many years, and it's finally happening, and I think we've got a very professional and great organization going there. That's all I got in there.
All right, thanks. Kevin?
Yes, congratulations, Beth, and thank you for all you've done. The fire department, it's been about, what, two and a half years ago that the council addressed that issue, and council members, mayor, the, Tim, and legal department got raked over the coals a few times on how they handled it, but they persevered through all the negotiations and the meetings and the discussions, and worked with Delaware to get to a point where we have a chief who's not only dedicated but experienced and well-respected, And you got to enjoy a night like tonight. So all that you went through, uh, you got the, the fruit, uh, enjoy tonight. So. Congratulations and thank you for your hard work.
Thanks, Ken.
Yeah. And congratulations to all the chiefs, uh, promotions and that. So.
That's it.
Jake?
Yeah. Beth, as usual, no surprise. It's always good news when you do an audit. So to you and all the, your staff and everybody who worked on it regarding your fire department, it was a long time coming, a long time. And I'm going to say to Dan and myself and Tim and Tony who spent a lot of hours on this stuff that you have no idea what we did. And so it's, it's, we always said it was the right thing to do. It's personally satisfying to see that it got done. And it's satisfying to see that we've got top-notch fire department. We've got a great staff. And to all the guys who hung around through the bad times to get to the good times, which I think is where we're at now, a lot of that goes to Joe. So I want to thank those guys that stuck around for sticking around.
If I can give one alibi, we are fully staffed right now.
Yeah. There you go. Awesome.
All right.
Has it been how long, Joe? Years? You want to go home and count them up tonight?
Don't jinx it.
Well, that, that just goes to the, we're moving, we're moving in the right direction and we got the right people doing the, doing the job. So.
And Marcus. Marcus was part of that.
Yeah.
Okay. Jake?
Yeah, I think it's not really highlighted, the, the hard work and dedication that the staff and volunteers put in, uh, for this community. Um, it's not easy, but it's well appreciated. Uh, my other comment was in the, um, the Lansing Connect quarter release, I really enjoyed the, uh, page on the taxes. I thought that graphic on the breakdown of the dollar bill, uh, did a really good job highlighting how taxes are allocated.
All right. Thanks, Jay. Jesse?
Yeah, I'd like to thank Tom and Theresa Young for coming in tonight to talk to us about the prison tour. I've actually been on the prison tour and I would encourage anybody to get on their list. You know, they actually did the tour I was on and they were real informative and, you know, just a lot to see and, and talk about while you're behind the walls in there. So. Uh, congratulations to all the firefighters. They got pinned tonight. We appreciate all your hard work. And, uh, like people have said, you know, the, the, it was kind of a storm that went through for a while. And we've got through the storm and coming out sunshine on the other side. And that's just a great thing to see. Um, congratulations, Beth, on another successful audit. So we appreciate everything you and your staff do. Um, again, the pool, it is what it is. You know, we got a full summer, um, next year to enjoy it and many more years to come. So. I honestly, I don't know what your excuse is. My pool's open right now. So, but, uh, that's all I got there.
Did you just invite everybody over to your pool?
You've got a bigger pool than I do.
Uh-oh. We'll, we'll go to your pool one week and then we'll go to Tony's pool.
There you go.
Um, just again, I'd like to reiterate, uh, Beth, thank you for all your hard work. Uh, our firemen outstanding. You can just see how our community rallies around, uh, the firemen and the police officers in our town are, all of our city organizations. Um, you know, the, what I was thinking while you guys were all talking was we've done a lot. And, uh, now we have to get to work and figure out how we're going to be able to continue to fund, uh, all of these things and new equipment for the firemen and the police officers. And, um, something came to mind. I had several residents of Lansing, uh, approached me about, uh, the Core Civic facility. There's still some, uh, controversy going on with some of the, uh, Leavenworth government. Um, and some of, some of our city members reached out to me and asked if it would be possible if Core Civic, and I don't know all the details. I know there'd be a lot of work on this. Uh, but, uh, there is a significant amount of money that would go along with this idea. But the idea is to annex the property of Core Civic into Lansing if Lansing was interested. And it would bring in mass revenue for Lansing. That's if Lansing doesn't, uh, excuse me, Leavenworth doesn't approve, um, the, moving forward with that. But I would like to maybe bring that up as a potential, uh, agenda item for future meetings and, uh, maybe dig into that a little bit. So that's, uh, that's all I really have to say, but thank you, everybody.
Okay. Thanks, Pete. Dan?
Beth, it's almost routine to give you flowers every time we do an audit. And I don't want to understate that. I know it's a lot of work for you and everybody. And you always do an outstanding job. And Joe, what can we say? We chose the right guy. We appreciate your hard work. And, uh, Mayor, I will be out of the area all next week. So LCPA is next Tuesday. If Josh is available, I would recommend he cover the meeting.
Okay.
That's everything.
Thank you. Carrie, you're last. Send the best for last.
Is that what it is?
Yeah.
Okay. I'll go with it.